Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, March 26, 2025 Library Board of Trustees Meeting. It is 9:00 a.m. I am Ruth Gross, who is the chairperson, and I will let the participants introduce themselves.
Jennifer Jones, Library Director.
Nancy Lefave, Trustee.
Patrick Marshall, Trustee.
We are being recorded by John Cronin from Lake Cam. Thank you, John. And the first thing on our agenda is the Secretary's Report of the last meeting.
You have the Secretary's Report there, so I would move to waive the reading, excuse me, of the minutes and vote for approval.
So moved?
I need a second.
I moved.
Oh, he moved it. I'm a second. I'm sorry.
All of us in favor, please?
Aye.
Okay, we will move along to the financial report. Okay.
That's a good start here.
Jennifer, you're on.
All right, so I think we're tracking as usual. We are a little bit overspent with the rubbish, the waste removal. So I mentioned to Lori Catalano that we would be over budget, and she said the police have a different vendor for waste removal. So I think we're going to look at changing vendors.
So we are with the COA, right?
We are with the COA with Win Waste. And Tracy's looking into what's on the contracts, because the police have one that is on statewide contract. So we might get some savings next year. And I did up that line a little bit, knowing that for next year's budget that it would be over.
So my question is, is it just the price went up that's why the increase or not more?
Yes. So it was up to $150 and it just went up to like $179.
So if we change, it would be with the COA?
Yeah, the COA.
Ours goes there because we don't have an access place.
I didn't know if they were going to put a dumpster here.
So the bill in total is twice $179 now. And I think the police get a much better deal.
This month?
This month, yeah.
Wow.
We must have a lot of trash.
It's for a certain dumpster size. But pointing it out managed to get a little action of, oh, maybe we could get a better deal.
Okay, so good. We still have water services scary high.
Scary high.
914% over budget.
There's not much I can do. So what I've been doing is, you know, I'm keeping an eye at the bottom line and where I can move over, say, books or something to state aid, I'm doing that.
This is something that we have had a chronic problem with. And it's not us. It's the fact that we don't have what we have. We're paying for irrigation water. We need to check and see if we're paying for both sites.
I believe it's connected.
It is connected. When it starts sprinkling here, it goes through the cycle around. So if we're paying for over there, we're paying for more than our own site. And I have strong emotional attach to that building, being on the Historical Commission. But I mean, we need to really think about where the budget money is going.
Is that building going to have a water meter?
I have no idea. Probably not, because the water meter is over here.
So is it connected to our... So is that toilet going to be connected to our?
I don't know about that. They put in the lines and everything, but I don't remember seeing anything coming this way. I will ask.
Because I'm not sure. I mean, it's not going to cost much to run a toilet and some water for the sink.
Yes, and it is infrequent use too. But it's just the idea that they probably, they may not do it because of the expense or something.
Well, I would imagine most of this is the sprinkler though, the outboard.
Well, yeah, because when we just do regular non-irrigation months, we're very low.
It's $38 this month.
Right, so I mean, to use the bathrooms here and to wash your hands and to use the kitchens, the two little kitchens.
It goes up a little in the summer when I start filling the...
Yes.
But it's like something.
Yeah.
It's not huge.
But it's still, that's revolving water, so it's not...
No, every once in a while I have to fill it.
But it's just, you know, this is...
Yeah, one of the bills I got from the summer was...
It's been a chronic problem for 20 years.
$1,700, so.
Maybe we need a big picture of the sprinkler and books just floating into the ground? If that's where the money is coming from?
You're going to give me a heart attack.
No, no, books disappearing and drying into the ground. If that's the book money going into the sprinkler.
Well, I mean, it's just so that we're not...
Yeah, no, I understand how you juggle it all.
I could probably go for a transfer. But I don't know what kind of money they have to do a transfer either.
Initially, when the system was put in, the Historical Commission oversaw the building and actually got money allotted, and it was two separate line items, our Historical Commission budget and the Historic Townhouse budget. And then at the end of the year, we would usually appropriate money to come over here to pay for our share of the water. Now that it's not, we don't have that supervision anymore. I'm just going to ask what's going on. It may be things, something like through the town office, you know, through Tracy or somebody, because it's also like the Historic Library is also on... But that's a different meter, to best of my knowledge.
Yeah, it's got an electric meter.
Do you remember that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I don't think there's anything else much to report budget-wise.
Well, I mean, considering that we have that one item that's almost 1,000%, being at 87%, well, we should be around, what, 75 to 80 is not bad.
Yeah, if you take that out, we're kind of around like 76% or something.
Yeah, where we should be. Thank you. Nicely done.
We also got our next state aid check for closets. So that was $17,484, I think. And a penny? It might have been a penny.
Yay. And what are you going to do with that?
Put it toward the water.
There you go.
For gifts, which is the next one. Our friends, the Brotherhood of Shoe and Allied Craftsman, came and used the room again, so they gave us another $50.
That's something nice.
So we got some memorial donations for Dr. Neil Bernstein too. And then one, a person, a patron who usually donates in honor of, I believe it's her sister, our friend, did her donation again this year for children's books. So those are the latest reports for that.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Thank everybody who donates in honor or memory of people. It's a nice way to keep the gift giving.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Director's Report.
Okay, so for the collections, we had a part of the bottom shelf of the CD structure break.
It's so heavy. They were so heavy.
There was nothing in it, so I don't know. I just gave up, I guess. So what I'm looking at... I would hope not, but you know, little kids do a lot of that.
How many children actually are over there, the CD area?
I don't know. A lot.
How many children know what a CD is?
That's true. Right here.
It's a coaster that your mother makes you use.
It goes in the...
Recycled cases.
So it's not, when you pull it, the stopper thing kind of came out of the rail? So it just kind of doesn't do what it should. I don't want to have any issues.
So does the whole thing have to be replaced?
No, so it's one of those modular where you just take off that shelving unit and you can put in a different style shelving.
Do we have any of the shelves?
Oh, yeah, we have some stuff in the back.
We have to check this out, see how much torque was on.
I can do a demonstration after. What I thought I might do is, given that you can put different shelving over there, is shift the CD collection to one side, so heating them down to fit. And then on the other side, put just the regular flat shelving so that I can move the nonfiction DVDs off of the top of a shelf to actually be on a shelf. And then maybe display some things if we're able to. So that's my plan.
Small housekeeping, huh?
Yeah, whittling CDs down again. And then Youth Services, attendance has still been high, so we haven't had that drop that usually happens. So this current session is running through May 15. Music Time and Playing with Purpose have had good attendance. And actually, this month, she's starting that six-week run for Playing with Purpose to see how that does on Wednesdays. And then Steam Afternoons, she kind of had a slow start. I included her full report, so you can take a look at that. But she had only a couple kids at the first one, and then she kind of doubled that the next time. But they all had a really good time and learned a lot, so she's really pleased with the change.
Do we think we're seeing new faces because people are discovering us? Or are they just the tried and true?
I think it might be a combination of people, you know, it's the usuals that come in, the people that have their routines, but also newer folks are coming in. And actually, February Vacation Program, we saw a lot of people who we don't usually see come in for the Poop Museum and some of the other programs, which the Poop Museum got a nice little feature in Nemesis Week, so that was nice to see.
It was very cute.
And then PACE has contacted Teresa about returning. So they apologized profusely about previous issues.
They had changes staff, I remember.
They had a change in staff. That whole set of people is gone now, so they want to revamp sort of a monthly event here. But Teresa didn't want to interrupt her current program plans to slot them in, you know, because she wanted to try the whole six-week run for Playing with Purpose and Music Time. So she said to them, perhaps in the fall, but they didn't want a date soon so they could sort of start things. So a magician came in this month, and he was pretty well attended, actually bigger than we expected it to be, which did draw in a lot of people, I think, who we don't normally see.
Right. I know that this... Well, and it's really easy building to be in with children because everything's on one floor, the sightlines are really good, all the things that we purposely produced here with this building, so.
And we didn't advertise it. It was all PACE advertising it. So that kind of brought in their...
I still get PACE notifications, even though my great children have paced out.
So we had a great time with Tina for creative card making. Everyone really enjoyed it. They made three different greeting cards. The sessions had been full, but we had, so it was 20 possible people and we had 17 show up. So that's a pretty good return. So she expressed an interest in returning, so I'm thinking about maybe something in the fall for her, closer to the holidays. Novelties discussed how to read a book by Monica Wood. And they've outgrown this room. They had 23 or 24 people or something like that. They had a huge amount of people. So they're going back into the gallery, starting, they started last night. So they were discussing Northern Spy by Flynn Barry. So we're going to see how it works in there. I know they were having difficulty because side conversations would happen. It's such a big space.
That's good.
If we had a meeting room that was like just bigger than this, but not as big as that, that would be fantastic. So future plans, maybe?
One off the back of the building?
Off the back of the building, yeah. Would definitely be helpful. And then we had 23 people come for Alfred Solmier. He said the S is not pronounced. And he talked about the French in New Bedford. His book is The French of New Bedford, The Early Years. We added that both to the nonfiction collection and this local history collection. And so that was through Spinner Publications of New Bedford, which I hope we'll continue to have that relationship with them, with local authors. Tomorrow, we've got Matt York with the Highwayman Songs and Stories. That's a Lakeville Arts Council grant program. And then we have Paint Night with Elsie on April 1, family movie matinee.
Is that, how is that filling up? Because I know Elsie's really very popular.
She's filled and the waitlist is filled, so.
Oh, okay.
We've been turning people away. Golf in the Library is happening Saturday, April 13 at noon for the Friends. Oh, Sunday, yeah, sorry. Sunday, April 13. Mass capoeira demonstration is for Vacation Program, so that's Tuesday, April 22 at 2:00. And then Teen Peepshi is Thursday, April 24 at 6:00.
All right, for those unknowing, what is peepshi?
Peepshi is peeps done up as sushi.
Peeps?
Yeah. Making sushi with peeps.
Oh. That sounds like fun and sweet.
What is mass capoeira?
Capoeira is a martial art form from Brazil, which combines sort of martial arts and dance.
Is it for any age group?
It's not for kids, but during Vacation Week, so anybody could come watch.
Okay, that's interesting, though. We have a variety of programming here. In case anybody doesn't know, we do.
Yes. You check our calendar, you'll all know.
Well, look at the calendar and then try to fit something in, say, on a Thursday afternoon or something like that.
That's when we need another room.
Yeah.
After 20 years, we need another.
Right over there.
With some closets.
With some closet storage, yeah.
Everybody loves.
About five or six off of it. Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, any questions about programs, anything more?
Oh, Jo is just going to go over, DPW is clearing.
They've already done, yes, they did a nice job on that side. It doesn't look like it's been ravaged, but it looks tidy.
No, it looks very nice.
You know, I think people don't realize that how much finesse the DPW has, besides plowing and paving roads and stuff, they can do. They have the talent and the eye for doing a lot of the supervision stuff that really works.
So it looks, it will look great with grass when they put that in. I'm not sure when that's going to happen, but probably soon.
Yeah, they would have to do it before a certain date because of the, not the next three... I think it's Friday through Monday, it's going to be rainy all the time. So maybe active, don't... See, we're on a slope, so some, you don't want to lose all your seed at the bottom of the slope.
And then the Wi-Fi project is complete.
Yes.
The desktops are really running fast.
Good, good.
The Wi-Fi access points seem to be a little slower, so I mentioned it to Bob. He hasn't gotten back to me in a while, so I'll poke him about, you know, why they might be so slow. The sales, sales installed the staff computers earlier this month, so we've done that replacement. I'm working on a technology plan too that I'll bring next month for replacement of the various other computers and copiers and printers that we have. Still monitoring leaks, and then the roof is on the capital plan for this year's town meeting. The fire panel inspection and the sprinkler inspection. I did, I think I sent everybody a little bit about that. So it revealed a longstanding problem with the lack of a flow switch on the big main pipe. So they said that if the sprinkler system had been going off, it would not have alerted the fire panel that it was going off. So nobody would have known. We would have walked into sprinklers.
And had a couple inches of water on the floor.
Can you imagine having water on the floor, Patrick?
Oh, Patrick, you have experience with water on the floor. We could call you right away.
What would we do?
There was another problem they found with the battery draining too quickly. So it was installed last year and the battery percentage was too low. So they said that the charging may be the problem, or it could be bad battery. So let's start with replacing the batteries to see if it's bad battery. If it's the charging, we have to replace the whole motherboard part too. So that might be an expense of getting that done. But we'll see at the next inspection if the batteries are low again.
When's the next inspection?
So it would be February next year or March next year.
Oh, so we won't know for a year?
We won't know for a year. Although, if it gets too low, it does alert you.
It lets you know, so you'll at least have an idea if it's some... If it happens right away, we'll know that it's probably the actual...
It should let us know that it's got a low battery and critical failure, so. And then we'll just need to look at irrigation companies at some point. I don't have any timeline on when the well is going to be installed yet. I guess, you know, when we were here, Franklin talked a little bit about it, but I don't know beyond that what the...
So the entire system needs to be replaced or just...
It's over 20 years old, so that's part of the issue right there. And then there's been some work done and some heads replaced and not replaced. So I think it's questionable whether all of the areas are actually going off.
Well, it's just seeding the grass area and then digging it up to put in irrigation.
Seeding is usually an inexpensive way of dealing with the issue as opposed to the irrigation system itself, so.
Well, I know, I just, do we need to wait for the seeder until it's been dug up and replaced?
We're on a slope. We need grassroots to hold this for, because of erosion. So how far it will get done? I mean, we're not talking about replacing the irrigation system this year, are we? No.
I don't think that we could, because we don't, I don't know when the well is going in. We don't know which sprinkler parts are not working.
And when you jury rigged an old system with some new pieces, usually the old pieces collapse afterwards. So it's better to probably pull up the whole thing and do it right.
Yeah, and the truck on the walk out there doesn't help that day.
But there could be some leaks too. That might be why we're ending up with massive water bills.
It would be fun to be here early in the evening and watch, to see when the system is running, to see just what is working and how it's going through the cycles.
We could spend the entire summer planning that and never get to it. When does it go off?
I think around 7 o'clock.
Yeah, I think it is.
That's when it starts. Now, that was because we were on this time with the Ted Williams camp. So we could probably...
We haven't changed the timing.
We haven't changed the timer since then, so maybe we could change the timer. I mean, at 7 o'clock, there could be a program here. You could be walking and...
We don't want to do it during the concerts or anything.
No, a concert series or something.
But do we?
Well, it depends on how hot it is. The children might enjoy it, but I don't know that the adults would.
Usually it's freezing at the concerts.
We probably need to look at that, because if we're not using the water from Loon Pond, then we can set the cycles to go off at, like we used to before. So maybe that's another thing.
Go off at 6:00 a.m. or something. Yeah, because I don't see us getting the well in time to change it this year.
Yeah, and we've been, how long have we been talking about this? Since before you came, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, we've been talking about a well for at least 18 years, so. So I don't, I don't know what the timeline is. I could talk to Frank and see if there's a time.
Frank, is he going to be...
I'm pretty sure it's going to be them.
They're going to put an irrigation system or have a company to put it in?
Well, they're going to be the well.
Oh, they're going to do the well or...
Or they're going to manage.
They're going to be in charge of the whole thing, okay.
I think.
So maybe we should ask, when I ask Paul about the irrigation, I will ask him about the well and see what he knows about the well. On where the timeline is.
Because it, I mean...
Because Franklin is, Frank is also involved with this.
It sounds like they want to do it this year and get it done, but I don't know what that means.
We don't want to put it where we're going to have another activity room. We want it off.
Well, there's notes on the plans for where the expansions could be, so. I'll just bring out the plans and say, not there, not there, so, let's see.
Talk a lot about irrigation lately.
Yeah, I know. On, under other, we're talking about staff performance reviews, so I'll be submitting them to Human Resources this week. And we do debriefs the second week of April. We received an offer to have Narcan on the premises, and I didn't know how people feel about...
I was going to ask also about having those heart things.
Oh, the AED?
Yes. We're going to be having one across the street of the church and hopefully two, one on each floor. And I was wondering if any of the town buildings have them, other than fire and police, maybe?
Maybe the schools.
I mean, I think it would be something that, if this is Safety Committee or Health and Safety Committee, that should be maybe making a recommendation, or we could ask them. Because I think we have, we have great support and response because the fire station is going to be even up the street, but it's all close vicinity. But in the case of something happening here in the building, it would be nice to be able to provide a service, especially life-saving.
It would normally come, we just got one from the fire department, yeah. It would be up to them to...
I'll talk to the chief.
Yeah, I think, yeah, talk to, see what he thinks. Because we're trying to get, the one that we're going to be getting through a grant, we want to be compatible with what the first responders would have in town as opposed to something they want to offer us or something like that. So it just seems that it would be really a good idea because we do have a number of people who are, well, anybody could have a heart attack.
It's anywhere, yeah.
A part of our population might be more susceptible to this sort of thing, so to protect.
It is one of the things that, if I recall too, from one of the towns I was at, I mean, we didn't have one because the expense is really high for them. And so the fire department wouldn't put one in because they just couldn't afford...
But now there's a lot of grants available.
Yeah, I mean, there are grants available and whatnot, so.
I can find out where that grant we're getting to is, but they probably already know about it, but...
And the Narcan offer that...
So it's for BMC Health.
So we have those. They're just, they're put on the shelf. We have them kind of in a discreet location. If somebody needs them, they can pick it up. I mean, they're available at the Board of Health. They're available.
So people, like, would, it's for the public to take, like, the COVID test?
She mentioned just giving us a couple so that we could have them kind of in the back.
If somebody came in and said, help, somebody's having a problem, we need this, is what we need?
Yeah, I think it's great. So we could just have them like at the circ desk in the back.
Yeah, the adults' circ desk.
You would have to see your staff comfort with having that, though. That is a big, I know with my staff, it was, they didn't really want to be involved with...
Like, they were concerned about liability or...
Liability, but they didn't want to be the ones giving it out. They're not medical professionals or whatever. But this is a new, I don't quite understand it all, but it's a new thing that they just have there. We do have a different population than you have here as far as using the library. So it is something that's just, we have a shelf that's for the homeless and whatnot that are using the library a lot, and it's just there. I don't even know if it's out, you know, when it runs out. This organization does take a look at it and periodically comes in and puts other things there like toothpaste. And I mean, it runs the gamut of necessities. But, but yeah, I mean, if you're having it, my staff was adamant they didn't want it behind the counter because they just didn't want the liability and I didn't want them to feel uncomfortable either, so.
Yeah, I know, the program I attended at Live Learn X with the Plymouth Library talking about their recovery space. They were saying, you know, even if staff doesn't feel comfortable using it, there might be somebody in the building who will administer it, so just having it.
If it's here, there might be someone who has had experience with, yeah. It's better than not having it here and having somebody with experience and a person who's having a problem.
Yeah, I'll check with them first, though.
And there may be a possibility that people could have some kind of a training so that they'd feel comfortable, know what parameters to have or something like that.
Maybe I could talk to the chief about that too. If he is comfortable doing a training. Or knows somebody who can. So I'll get back on that. And then Legislative Breakfast went very well. Small crowd is here, though. So Senator Becca Roush gave a really fantastic keynote, and you can watch it through Norfolk Cable if you really want to see it. And then Friends met to finalize their plans for tea in the gallery and get volunteers for their golf event. So I put in a note that this is probably the last year that Joe Buckley is doing his mobile mini-golf. I don't know, he was planning to retire. He's trying to sell the business, so I'm not sure who might take over. They're going to have to find a new company next year.
Is this his only business that he has? Okay, so it's not like it's connected to something else?
No. And Homeschool Art Show... Then Homeschool Art Show was great, and the High School Art Show has had some people coming in to be with through all the weeks. And then we had the musicians play, they were really fun, liked playing for their friends and family. And then the next exhibit is this weekend, the Middle School Show on March twenty ninth.
Yeah, is this Randy's third show here?
Randy's show will be up in the middle of April, yeah.
It was our first show.
Yeah, and then he did another.
Then he did another one, has he done another one?
I don't think so.
So this is his third show with us, and his art is evolving always, you know.
Right.
And he gave us that wonderful picture that he painted of the historic library, which is down there.
Budget update.
So we have a budget hearing scheduled with the Joint Select Board FinCom on April ninth, Wednesday, April ninth, at five forty-five. So we're going second, we're after the town administrator, as long as the schedule's still the same, which I haven't heard any changes yet.
Okay. Policy list review.
So we did computer and internet use policy, and I sent you the really marked up version.
Yeah.
And then I sent you a nice clean version. So that one, we can vote on next time, but I did combine Wi-Fi, so there's no longer a separate Wi-Fi policy, everything about Wi-Fi is also rolled into the computer and internet use policy.
I have a question.
Okay.
Now, I know that people bring their devices to the staff for help, and obviously, there's never been an issue, but in what I read from what you sent, it says that the staff is really not going to touch people's own computers.
Yes, so that was, that was a line in the old policy. Library staff cannot accept liability of handling patrons' equipment.
Right.
And are therefore limited in their ability to provide technical assistance to patrons using personal laptops or other devices.
And where is that?
That is under responsibility, it's one, two, three, four, the last two, the last line of the fourth paragraph, under responsibility.
Okay. My question is, if somebody brings in their iPad and the staff says, okay, let me do this, blah, 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 something happens to the iPad, has the staff broken policy in order to do that? You know, it's a liability thing, I, I think they do a great job, and it's certainly a service that's wonderful to provide. I just want them to be.
Yeah, and that's, that line I didn't change, so maybe it needs to be a little bit different. Maybe it's that the staff is not liable in assisting patrons with their devices.
Yeah, somehow make it clear that if your device is, you know, twenty years old and it just quits working while it's in my hand.
Well, but this, this is actually a line that's more than just that, though. This is, because you can run in, so for instance, one of the things, we're in the process of redoing our computer too, but one of the things you're in is, it's one thing for assisting, as Jennifer has here, as far as, well, not that, you said you hadn't changed it, but it's one thing, okay, let me show you Nancy how to do this, and yep, if you push this button here, whatever, that's one thing, but you do want to have the note in there for not touching, because one of the things is if, you know, I know of libraries where it's, oh, you want to charge your phone? Okay, I have a charger behind the desk, let me take your phone, we'll charge it, and then something happens to the phone later in the day, the patron will come back and potentially yell at you because you did something while it was there. I mean, that's more what it is with the not touching or handling, but when working with the person.
They have to, but they have.
You kind of have to, so you, you are kind of covered in that, because you are saying that.
I just want them to be covered, that, that's all, I don't want anybody to change the service they're providing. I just want zero liability for our staff.
But this is where also, like, at least for our library, like, if you were doing some, I don't know, if you were helping somebody online, buying something on Amazon, let's say, which is pretty common, people need to do, they need assistance, you know, we don't, and I'm sure it's the same here, we don't touch your credit card. Once it, once it's to the point of, okay, yep, Nancy, here, you put in your number, or I don't know how to put, you put, no, you put in the credit card number.
Yeah.
We don't touch it, things like that are, those are kind of the hands-off. What is your password? No, you put in your password, it's, it's not up to me, I don't remember it. Okay, well, then you need to create, here's how to create the new one, or, or find it, but, I mean, it's, it's that type of sensitive.
You have to be able to enable them to actually function with the piece.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the actual equipment, if something were to happen to the equipment.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that the wording covers everything.
Yeah, I mean, we, we pretty much, I kept in all the liability that was from the previous policy, so like, that we're not responsible for any information being compromised.
Or damage caused to a person's lives.
I think it's there.
The first sentence captures a lot of information in that paragraph.
And even if we say we don't, we can't accept the liability of handling patrons' equipment, and we are therefore limited, we can provide some assistance, but we're limiting what we do usually.
If they identify things like, you need to put in your own credit card number, you need to be able to do your password, and I cannot help you with those things, or something like that, right up front.
And it's a lot of what iPads and phones is, they're at the desk, they turn it around, and I'm like, may I? And then I just type in something or find something, and that's it.
Okay.
I don't otherwise touch their device.
Okay.
You know, we do, you know, we do grab it if they're checking out, but they're right there with us, so it's not like we're taking it off to another area.
Drop it and break it, or whatever.
You couldn't be completely hands-off, because there's, I mean, the people that have their barcodes on the phone now, so they're handing you the phone to check out materials, I mean.
But I feel like it's covered with therefore limited in their ability.
Okay.
We can do some things, but not everything.
Yeah, no, it wasn't a matter of what people are able to do, it's a matter of who's gonna come after them if they find a way to get a new iPad.
Usually I like to have them right in front and center of me when I'm doing something, like, okay, so do this and do that, and then they can see what's happening, too.
Right.
So are we gonna vote on this?
No, this is for next time.
Yeah, just to look at it, if there's anything else you want to see changed, yes.
Okay. All right, and we don't have any policy reviews from last time to vote on.
It was the Wi-Fi, but since we decided to roll it all into one of our policies.
All right, oh, the new business.
Okay. The entrance signs changed to lights, plus I got a quote from MV to do the things that.
We were talking.
We were interested in doing Nancy, so, so he put on the quote. I don't have the picture.
Right here.
Okay, so you've got the picture, that's okay. So he put on the quote, the two lights and the wiring and everything that would go out at the entrance sign. He looked at the entranceway here and decided that they could do an LED strip above the letters.
And say, like, oh, buddy.
And they can hook into some.
So we could actually see them at night time?
They can hook to nowhere.
After twenty years, we can see them.
Already there, and they can also put in some recessed lights, like three lights shining down, much like these cans here, to provide light over on the.
Under the canopy?
Under the canopy, because it is kind of dark with.
Yes, especially if you're coming out the side door, the lake cam door that we had, so, yeah.
So he said that's all doable for a total of four thousand four hundred and fifty. This is something that probably, I mean, it technically is facilities, but I'm not sure what Paul's budget looks like.
So Paul got a copy of this, too?
He got a copy of this, too.
So this is something.
So, yeah, we just have to sign off on them after that.
And do we have money to cover it?
Um, we definitely have state aid.
Yeah, you know, I think this is something that is gonna, is important.
I think so, too.
Because it's, if you didn't know this library, you'd come up here and you'd go, how do I get in at night with? Because our uplights that are on the walkway are a problem, too, they're also, it's because of their age and how they function.
It's either we put lights there, or you pipe in some Barry White music and put some candles out front, because.
But I think this is really a good idea to do this.
Wouldn't we want somebody with a grill up there to have that once?
So is this your thing where we need to vote?
I would make a motion to approve four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the installation of the lighting out front, trying to, mostly out front, so.
Yeah, at the entrances. I second the motion this time, instead of trying to move it again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go for it.
Great.
Get it in before August. Which is basically our deadline for everything in the world.
Yeah, I'm sure we can schedule it once we approve the quote, should be easy to do. Okay, and then on to the brick walkway, so we have two, two under the brick walkway. We have the reimbursement for Ruth, and then we need to discuss what the scope of work would be if we have someone to come in to replace the majority of the work over here.
Your screwdriver and.
Well, it may come to that, these are, none of these bricks are in an area where any non-professional placement would affect safety. That's, these are all bricks, well, this is a combined order, this is this past year's order, which was four bricks, plus fifty-four replacement bricks from two orders from a company that's now defunct, that gave us, I don't know, must be porous bricks or something, they all, they didn't fade away, they absolutely disappeared.
Yeah, I think this was a company that I remember was in flux to begin with.
Right, we, Betsy worked with them when they had one owner, then they changed to a new owner, I worked with him, and then the whole thing was gone, and for good reason.
So it might have been a lot of different things, it might have been quality control.
So, anyway, there's no, there's no going back to them, is what I'm saying. So this is, this is Payflock, the company that we have now.
So we need to first reimburse you?
That would be very nice.
So I will make a motion to reimburse Ruth Gross six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
No, it's twelve hundred and seventy, it's two checks, I wrote a.
Two different.
Two different checks, one for fifty percent deposit and one when I took up the bricks.
The total of the.
But we've never reimbursed you for the deposit, right?
Correct.
So we are trying to reimburse you for one thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
The total here is six thirty-eight.
That was for what was due, and then there's the deposit.
Do you have another invoice with the deposit?
I, yes.
So is it twelve seventy-six is the amount? All right.
Okay, so I'll get a copy of this, so I have.
I will move to reimburse Ruth Gross one thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Thank you very much.
I second that motion.
For the brick.
Not that I mind donating six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, just not this week.
Okay, so we're all set, is it approved?
We didn't vote yet.
Okay, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Beautiful.
So then the scope, I have three companies in the area that I did some research on to see who was, you know, came up as a masonry, does walkways, or a landscaper who does walkways, so I've got De La Roco, Jacob Stone, and Ricciarelli, or Riccurelli?
On the county road, and like those, right?
Yeah, so I figured I could contact them with a scope to get just a quote.
For installation, yes.
And I'll get you some kind of visual for them.
So just the number of bricks in the quote?
Fifty-eight, it's fifty-eight bricks, right?
Fifty-eight bricks.
Are we all fifty-eight, are they doing all fifty-eight, or are they?
Oh, let me, let me look at it, I think it's probably more like fifty-four, fifty-five.
It's always a question, what are we gonna do with the old bricks when they take them on? Just flip them over and use them for other things?
Well, we can use them for things, but not necessarily in the, we can't send them back to the company and have them re, I've tried that, and he won't put them in, in his machine.
So the issue is the brick themselves and also the way that they were printed.
Right, I, I'm assuming it's the bricks themselves, it could be the paint they used, it could be anything, but it's all gone, so you don't see. Right, you don't even see the indentation, it's not like the paint.
They're not disintegrating, the bricks aren't disintegrating.
Well, I mean, on a, on a microscopic level, they probably are.
But as a brick.
As a brick, if you want a brick for something to use for a brick.
That we might be able to use in the area of the Norris Garden as a mow strip around that, I mean.
Yeah, that would work.
So that the lawnmower doesn't ever get too close to the.
And we have bricks in, in, in the woods, too.
Yeah.
They're not all gray, but they wouldn't necessarily have to all be gray.
If you're gonna run a lawnmower over them as a mow strip, it doesn't matter about the color, they just, we'll do something nicely. So when they pull them out, can we just have them, will they move them, the old ones? Okay, if they could move them to where the other ones are outside, and then we'll discreetly turn them over so that.
They're moving, maybe putting them in a wheelbarrow or?
Dump them, yeah.
Okay.
I don't expect to find them stacked.
Okay.
Just, if they move them, that would be great.
Move the old bricks.
To where, we'll find you the location, we'll put a stake or something.
I can move the old bricks if needed, too.
But I can help you do it, too.
Anything else you want them to do?
We know how to use a wheelbarrow.
Just basically set the bricks.
Just set the bricks.
Yeah, we don't want them to take them, we want to hold them here.
They would need to put sand between the bricks.
So we got, but they would know that for installation?
I would assume they would know that.
Hopefully, and then we are keeping old bricks.
Yeah. And get it done before August.
Possibly done before?
We want it done before the anniversary.
We want everything done before the anniversary.
Yes, we got plenty of time.
We want people to come in and tell us how good the library is, not what they'd like for us to do.
It doesn't look like it's twenty years old, right?
So this is gonna be a big thing I'll have to do by the end of this weekend, next week, to get.
Yeah, and I'll get you the pictures, too, so.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you, Jennifer.
Next. Okay, brick walkway, and thank you, everybody, for the reimbursement. Staff development request discussion and a possible vote.
So I have a memo for you, of course, I sent it to the town administrator already in his packet, so I'm requesting an early closure for Wednesday, June eleventh, at four PM, like we have done before, so we can learn about from a reading from Teresa.
I think this is a perfect way of having an in-house meeting with everyone present here in the same thing at one time, so, yes, I support it.
Yes, do you need, do we need a vote on this one?
I think so.
Okay.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, it's June, June eleventh? June eleventh. We'll make sure we get it on the calendar now, so people are aware. People have been really good about it, even though some of them, oh, you're closing it for? Yeah.
Big sign, we are closing.
Maybe I'll put it out on the sandwich board thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you put it a month in advance, then most people would have been here at least once to view it.
What is the best way to reach the public for, is it Facebook?
Pretty much now, I think it's a combo of Facebook and website. There's an immunity newsletter going out, so I can put it in there.
Put it in there, so you have fair warning and also have a sign up for a month that we're closing.
And the immunity newsletter goes to everyone who's.
Signed up with the town.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
But it's also on the town website, so if you don't have it actually coming to you, or coming across your website, your email, you can see it, be there for you.
Okay. All right, Girl Scout, Brownie Troop, seven seven three one eight.
They have a little letter, which I looked at and realized they didn't leave any contact information on, so I couldn't contact her for further information, or she popped in, I said I would have to get permission, she gave me the flyer. She gave me the flyer and that was it. So she said they already have made the butterfly houses and this is just, they're trying to figure out places to put them.
That's nice.
In town.
That would be nice.
Yes. And are they, what what plants are they putting in?
That I don't know. I would have asked if I had her contact info. I, I have a feeling, I told her we were meeting today, so she'll probably come in either later today or tomorrow, hopefully. Um, otherwise I'm calling the Girl Scouts main office to be like, who's the head of?
Yeah, if it's milkweed, they could probably pull some that's already out there and move it if that's what they want.
Yeah, I don't know if they have a specific plant.
Which I think are not in good condition that we were attracting birds to at one point with, um, a group from conservation or something, um, quite a while ago.
So where would you want the butterfly house to go, Nancy?
Um, it, do we know when, uh, their timeframe for installation?
Don't. They wanted to do it as.
We don't wanna have it have to be moved or be in this, in the way of the, um, removal of stuff that we're talking about with the highway department, so, um, maybe if you could find out then, could put it, we could, if we want it so it's easily to view, then it would be, makes sense to put it maybe over here behind where the little sign says this is a community garden donations in that area because nobody is going to be touching that except us. So that would be, it would be less delicate.
And there's milkweed there.
And and then everybody that comes in could see it. They'd, and they'd say, what is that? Or if.
Is that too much traffic for the butterflies?
In here someplace that says, did you see our new butterfly house? So.
Do the butterflies need calmness or anything?
No, they need plants to attract them. They usually ignore you unless you're right in their face, you know.
Cool. Monarch migration was final jeopardy question yesterday.
I know it is. All signs that insects are down, like eighty, I don't know.
So I'll find out their timeline and say, is this area?
Hmm, and that would be lovely.
Yeah.
Find out what they're planning.
They need to have a post put in. They probably, they need to put it on a post or something.
Could they put it on the back of that sign?
I don't think people would see it.
Oh, that makes sense.
Plus that sign has a warp to it. The front face piece may need to be glued to camp.
I guess question is, are they offering the house or the house with a post an installation? Because if it's just bring us the house and we put it up somewhere.
Who does the installation?
Yeah, once we see the house, we'll also know what type of post it would need.
Guessing if they're earning a badge for this, they probably need to do some significant part of the work.
Well, they've done all the creative parts, so.
Yeah.
No, the question is, do you want?
It's nice that.
A bunch of eight-year-olds.
It's nice that Old Colony and Bristol Plymouth both were involved with the cr, the construction of the wooden homes. That's really neat.
Well, should we make a motion to accept the butterfly house pending location? I will second.
Seven seven three one eight.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hopefully she will call you today.
Oh, no, no contact at all on here.
Well, if not, then every seven-year-old girl who comes in.
Just ask them. Nothing, nothing creepy about that.
Okay, so there's no paperwork for the next two. Um, food for fines proposal, I didn't send in the letter. Tracy had said we'll probably be on one of the March select board meetings. We weren't on the last one. She said, was looking likely for the thirty-first, but then she said when I was at town hall recently that Andrew was looking into it, so I'm not sure if I'm gonna be on the schedule. So I'll have to find out if I'm gonna be on the schedule for March thirty-first or not.
How much do we usually bring in in fines in a month?
About three hundred to three fifty, sometimes lower.
So it's substantial, but not overly so.
Yeah, and I'm fine with, if if the food for fines proposal doesn't work, I wouldn't mind putting a box out there for just a women's collection.
Is this gonna go to the LACO? I got a tour the other day. It's really nice, but it's small. It's, you know, it's, it's basically geared to seniors. And, um, yeah, but it's gonna be nice.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a need. And sometimes people are more comfortable coming to a place that is right in their town or something.
Are they collecting food? Yeah.
They're starting to collect, uh, canned goods, yeah.
So, I mean, you can just put out.
But they also run the, part of the, um, Meals on Wheels is also involved in that area too, so it's really nice.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's gonna be like, uh, make an appointment so people don't feel the stigma of.
Exactly how it's gonna be run, but I, they'll have it in a direction.
I think probably, the COA's always had that bring and take table.
They still have that, yeah.
So I think maybe people who are used to taking part in that will see this as just an extension of it maybe. Who knows? But is it for only seniors or anyone in town?
No, it's for senior age. I think it would be an age requirement. You have to be certain age to actually come there.
Okay, um, are there other food pantries in town?
No, there's one in, two couple in Middleborough, one at the, um, Central Congregational Church, which has been in business for a long, long time. And then there's one at Catholic Church.
Saint Vincent.
Saint Vincent de Paul.
And that is, um, I think that's also connected to some other ones that are in different communities by that same, Saint Vincent de Paul, I think it is or something.
Okay, I know, um, Christine, the veterans' agent, has talked about getting, I think she actually has a plot of land and working on getting a vegetable growing program going with the veterans, so.
Right.
That I think will be another.
I'm not sure if they're gonna try and get people to, uh, who actually have gardens as opposed to establishing a new program. Yeah, it's, it's really, I mean, I know that a lot of people do bring in extra produce and take, take it to the COA when they have like, you know, zucchinis and tomatoes and stuff like that. But it's, I don't know that it's actually, there's a pattern to it. It's just as people have upper crops and.
Bet nobody's bringing eggs. Not right now. Okay. On to our twentieth anniversary, which is coming up in August.
We got the dedication today.
I'm finishing putting together the other stuff so that we'll have a full span of what we actually did on most of the anniversaries.
And then we'll have to meet to talk about what's going on in August.
It's, um, one of the things that kinda coinces with this is that, that in twenty twenty-eight, the town is having its one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. And so between the two, um, maybe people start coming up with some ideas. They might not be appropriate for ours, but they, we might be able to do them with the one hundred and seventy-fifth or vice versa. Somebody might have an idea, because we're hoping to meet here. I get to solidify that with you for an hour on April twelfth. Drop in, come and see what we have. If you're in here, do you have an idea or send it to us? If you can't, you know, if you're involved with something on that date, but you have an idea, let us know. And that's gonna come out in the, the community newsletter, so it's gonna reach a lot more people. And sometimes an idea doesn't actually fit into a townwide, but it might fit into a focus on one department or something like that. So we hope it'll be a good brainstorming experience for people. You might have seen, I attended something in another community. We don't mind copying if something really works.
Marrowing is great.
But, well, it's the most sincere form of library supposedly.
April twelfth?
Yeah, from eleven to noon.
We have a reception that day, so it won't be in the gallery.
No, it would be here. Welcome streamer.
Good.
Uh, I think the conventionist dates meet. The conventionist dates.
Is the meeting here?
Here, yeah.
Well, then we could meet in a quiet room.
Yeah. Or I can see if Teresa's.
Well, we don't wanna take.
Just put a table up in front of the clock to get more attention.
Maybe. Oh, you and I can talk about this afterwards. This is one of the things that, you know, we can share some ideas and.
But April twelfth, eleven to noon is your, come in with ideas and see what you got.
And this is for the towns.
This is for the twenty twenty-eight, but we're starting. Our first event is gonna be this fall. It's gonna be a sensitive, um, walking tour of Thompson Hill Cemetery because right now the Cemetery Commission has been able to secure, um, one CPC grant to restore two of the tabletop stones that are very unique and unusual. They've been repaired, plus, um, some grant, um, some marble stones have been repaired. They're going for another grant at June. It's been approved by the committee, but town meeting would have to approve it at the June town meeting. And the idea is to take care of some of the ancient stones, but we have really interesting diverse styles. Um, stone masons who actually did the, um, stone carvers who did the headstones. And we have, have some times where we have twenty members of a family that are buried there. So we have certain parts of town showing up as being some very familiar names. So we're gonna do something and that's one of the things we wanna talk about too, if people wanna come. We're looking for presenters, um, of all age groups, not necessarily drama people, but you can, we're talking about maybe caught in costume for the period of the, of the stone, not necessarily for the actual individuals buried there, or just someone to talk about this person's life and, you know, how they interacted and like, well, with, initially it was in Middleborough, but how they came here and what they did and stuff like that, children. Make it what you want almost.
Do you want to set a meeting for our twentieth anniversary yet?
I, I would say May. May would be, I think it would be a bit of time to set.
Okay. All right. Anything else in older new business? For anyone? Okay. Our next meeting will be.
April twenty-third.
What day is the election?
It's April.
Seventh.
Seventh. So next meeting, we will also have the trade over.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third would be our, yeah.
Twenty-third works for me.
Nine A M?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
And then at that point, we will reorganize.
Right.
I'll put it on.
Or, you know, hold a typical.
We're reorganizing, by the way.
Oh, you're right. Let's reorganize.
Oh, that's true.
It'll be, it'll be your chair turn.
Yeah. All right. Um, anything else from anybody?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at ten oh two.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are.